I thought I was looking at you. Was that real?
All right. All right. Call to order, the meeting of the Salem School Committee of June 17th, 2024. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue, Room 227. You can also join via Zoom using the link in the agenda that is posted online. Want to make a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular school committee agenda.
Second.
Under discussion?
Second.
Under discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The matter carries. Do we want to recognize our retirees first?
Well, do you want to do public comment first?
Okay. Okay. Item two, public comment. The Salem School Committee would like to hear from the public on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it. The members of the school committee would like to remind the public that Salem Public Schools students regularly attend school committee meetings. We encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners.
There's no public comment online.
No public comment online, any public comment in the room? Seeing none.
All right. Ready to honor our retirees?
Let's do it.
Okay, let's do it, Mayor. Tag team this.
Okay. Well, you start.
Yeah, I'll just start by saying, I love this annual tradition where we have a chance to recognize the many staff that have dedicated their careers to Salem Public Schools. It becomes rare and rarer that you see people stay in the same district for a long period of time. And we are very fortunate to have some really dedicated employees, many of whom I've had a chance to work very closely with in this group for my, the last four years. But when you look at the years of service, these folks, many of them are 20-plus years, at the very least 15 years, but some 20, some 25, and then upwards of 30 to 34 years in one case, in the Salem Public Schools. And we're just so internally grateful for your dedication to our system, to our kids, to our families. Just to see how much education has changed, just even in the last five years, let alone in the 30 years that some of you have worked, speaks volumes about your resilience, your persistence, and your really commitment to the city and to families and to our families and kids. And we're just, you know, incredibly grateful for your dedication. Tonight, with, you know, some cupcakes that will make your lips turn blue and yellow, you know, and of course, we do have some gifts that we want to give you, just small tokens of appreciation. We wish we could do so much more, and we wish you the very, very best in your retirement. We hope it's as productive and fruitful as your years in the system has been. And we hope that you won't be a stranger. We're always looking for retired teachers and educators to come back, or retired assistants, clerks, to come back. We have a few of them that we love seeing every day, and they seem so much happier now that they're, they pick and choose the days they want to come in. But we, so we wanted, we want to take a moment to recognize you. Many of the people who are, the mayor's going to read the list, many people were unable to be with us because many of them retired in the middle of the school year. And, and so not everybody's retiring right now in June, but we, we do recognize anybody that's retired during the 23, 24 school year. So I'm going to have the mayor read those folks that are not with us today, and then we will recognize those folks that are with us here today. So, Mayor.
Thanks. I'll just add to that, that an expression of gratitude on behalf of the school committee and the city as a parent for all that you've done over these years, but also not just as what you've done for our kids, but as role models to younger educators and people entering the profession and who look up to, to folks like you and have, you have shaped the careers of many of them, and I think for the better, and certainly influenced our district as a whole for the better as well. So I'm going to share the names of the folks who are not here with us today, but even though they're not here, we're just as grateful for, for everything they've done. And I think one, one of them may be actually at a basketball game.
We heard.
Possibly.
We heard, yeah. And we told that person to go to the basketball game.
Yes. Did we? Oh, okay. That was a good call. Cynthia Hatcher, I'll do the years of service too, 32 years of service to the district. Karen Riordan, 34 years. Adriana Martin, 22 years. Janice Fisher, 15 years. Anne Linger, 23 years. Catherine Stavroakis, 13 years. Paige Cavello, 25 years. Patty Mento, 29 years. Hope Flynn, 30 years. Ellen Finn, 25 years. Amif Boucher, 31 years. I'm going to pronounce this wrong, I know it. Skender.
Karagazi.
Karagazi. Okay. 16 years. And then we have a number of folks who are here that we're going to call you up to present you with the city seal, a little token of appreciation. The total years of our retirees of service to this, to this district is 463 years of experience, so centuries of wisdom and skill. She's here. Is she not here?
No. No. That was, yeah, so she's not here yet.
Andrea Corovo, 18 years. Especially.
All right. And we will be sending those folks there, that will be one of our retirees' last orders of business. Mindy Moreno is to send everybody else their retirement gifts. But at this time, you may want to start calling the names of the folks that are here. I guess we'd ask that you come up. We'd like to get a photo.
Yep.
With you, and then at the end, maybe take a picture with everybody here.
That's great. Ellen. Ellen Mandelsteiner. 13 years, Mark. Want to just bring the sheet?
Yeah, bring the sheet with you, Mayor.
It's not going to be on the, you know what? I'm going to, I'm going to deputize. A vice chair.
Sounds great. I got you covered.
Okay. We have a city seal for you. And then we have. Want to make sure there's something in here.
It's a box of tissue paper.
There you go. This is a little plaque for you as a commenvento for your service. And so maybe we could just take it, let's take this, do you want to take it out? Well, I can't hold this, I'm not retired yet, so. Okay, all right, we'll have, we'll hold it for you. I'll hold it.
Good morning.
Yeah, how did that happen?
Not even a second. This does say, in recognition of your retirement, with sincere appreciation for your dedicated service, the students of Salem, June 17th, 2024. Well, I think today's June 18th.
It's the 17th.
17th. We're okay.
You know what? It's all a blur at the end of the school year. Congratulations to you. We're going to give you back your box here, and we're going to call you back up at the end, so you get a photo. Okay.
Excellent.
All right. We have next.
I'm going to list our next retiree, one who's very familiar to members of the committee, Mindy Moreno, Secretary to the Superintendent. 27 years of service.
She orders her own gifts, too. We should take it out.
Do you want to give me the other ones, and I can unbox them ahead of time?
Tag team, yeah, why don't we do that?
Oh, you know what? I know you're good, I know you're good for it, okay.
We can all help.
They're named, right? We know that.
They are, they are named, yeah. They're on the front.
I hope you gave the right ones.
Our next retiree is Patricia Barton, third grade teacher, 36 years of service.
I had a chance to go to Ms. Barton's classroom today, and you could see how excited the kids were for her, well, not excited that you were retired, but how much they love Ms. Barton today.
Sweet.
So, congratulations. 36, so that.
36.
We'll call you back up for the group photo.
Calling up another individual who is very familiar to members of this committee and has been a dear partner and a great leader for our members of the Ask Me Union, served as president for a number of years. Now, that's Paula Geist, a senior clerk typist.
18 years of service.
I have Paulus right here.
Oh, yeah.
Here you are, Paul. Ready to go?
There you go, Paul. You got, you got to juggle a few things, Paul.
And our next retiree.
You got the box.
Oh, of course. I will, I will ask our next retiree to help me with the pronunciation afterwards. Okay, all right. I'm going to give it a try, though, just because, Jody Chicheri Randaso?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, got it. And 20 years of service. Thank you, Jody. And although I did not have her as a classroom educator, I was in the same elementary school building as her, and I did have her sister, Judith Borden, fourth grade teacher, 34 years of service. Now, we'll invite all of the honored retirees to come join us for one group photo.
Does she want to stay for the meeting, or does she? Did you come with her?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We should take her out of order, Steve.
Look, I don't really know what I'm doing today. I'm just kind of.
We're going to take you out of order next.
You're retired.
Members of the committee are invited to join the photo, if they so please.
Don't just wave. I'm still waving. I'm just waving.
You want me to help you, Mary?
No, I'm good. I'll just get up. Give it a second. Okay, we got it. Waving from the background. I know, why are they over there? Wait a minute. If I get up, you can get in here.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more.
I swear to you guys.
I know how much you'd like to get your pictures taken, Mary.
We got confused.
Don't be galling. So now, so now it looks like I had to get that picture. I won't forget this.
Just lurking over.
Yeah.
Make that motion.
Not yet, about to.
You're all certainly welcome to stay. But you don't have to.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. 37 years and one hour. Get out. All right.
The joys of retirement, the sounds of retirement outside, yeah.
Should be quiet in the hallways, I thought, just. All right. Next item of business is approval of the consent agenda. This is the minutes of the school committee meeting of June 3rd, the warrants of June 6th and June 13th, and approval of the high school golf team's trip to Disney World in Florida.
Second.
Under discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The matter carries. We've done the retirees.
Mayor, can we take the student representative report out of order?
Yes.
Well, at this time, normally the student representative would lead their own student representative report, but we actually have a high school graduate sitting here with us at the dais, Natalia Feliz, who has given two years of incredible service to our district. And Natalia, at the end of your service, we wanted to make sure that we also recognized you for your many contributions. I always found you to be so thoughtful and reflective when you were here at the dais with us, and just made sure that the voices of all students were represented. You've been a great partner for me as a member of the committee, and I know that as folks watch the way that you comported yourself, you reflect the values of our district very well. And I understand that your mother's in attendance today, and perhaps Dr. Zright didn't tell you, but we are planning on giving you an award this evening in recognition of the two years that you served as the student representative for all of the students in the Salem Public Schools. So congratulations to you on your high school graduation, and thank you for what you have given back to this district while you were still a student with us.
Yay, thank you.
Turn it to the superintendent to.
Yeah, I'll do, can I just say something?
Yeah.
I'm really going to miss when you just called me Zright. Yeah, and you would just kind of lay it to me straight, like, Zright, this is what the real deal is. I really enjoyed working with you over the last few years. You are so refreshing. I love your enthusiasm and your energy, and you were never afraid to share what you thought with me, but always did so in a respectful, thoughtful manner. You're going to be successful in no matter what you do. You have great leadership qualities. You represent our community so well. I'm proud that Salem is sending off someone like you into the real world. I hope you come back to us and lead in this community, but you have, you know, been an outstanding representative for the school committee and partnered to me, and you've juggled so many things, the sports, academics, your family obligations, and you've done it really, really well. And so we're going to miss you a lot. It's going to be hard to replace somebody who's been here for two years, and I've always known that it was going to be Natalia for the last few years, so we have to start new with someone else. But I hope you keep in touch and let us know about all the accomplishments and the successes you have, and I know you're going to continue to make us and your family really proud. So congratulations, Natalia.
Thank you.
So I don't know, we'll go up and, let's take a photo, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a city seal for you. This is not a retiree. This doesn't say, thank you for your service. It says, your service as a student representative. It doesn't say on your retirement.
Yeah.
Public schools.
Would it be okay if everyone took the picture? Like, we all took it together?
Yes. Well, you've got to talk to these folks.
Yeah, you.
The other three that went out.
And we can't wait to hear your farewell speech, too, so.
I just got confused.
I just wanted to add something, because, you know, behind every student like Natalia, there's a mother who really deserves the credit, too.
Yes.
You know, and so I just wanted to thank you for, obviously, the hard work you've put into being a great mom, because you have a great daughter, so thank you.
All right.
All right, are we all going? Come on, Kate, nice try. We're all getting in the picture.
Burns, would you also like to be in this picture? I would like to be in this picture, so, yeah.
Natalia, you can have anybody you want.
Yeah.
You get to choose.
It's your call.
Yes. Apply biomedical sciences.
We're going to have to let you tell the public what you're going to be up to.
You need to tell everybody.
What if the public, like, they don't want to know?
So they want, they want, no, they want to know.
Take center stage.
And please. Oh, she's got tattoos. Can I have, can I?
Maybe in the room.
Oh, awesome.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to block it, but.
All right. Don't blink. And on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Keep looking. Lovely.
Dr. Zright again, Dominic.
Let me see that, I think, congratulations. You did a great job.
Yep.
Maybe.
You might need to.
Mary's making us laugh.
Wait, this one, too?
I would never.
This one, too, or just that one?
I much prefer to make.
So Natalia, you've received your, your retirement gifts from the school committee, which is customary, and it's normal for members of the school committee, as they're exiting, to just say a few words. So I don't know if you, anything you want to offer, next steps that you want to share with people about what you're up to, what your time on this committee has been like?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you. I feel like being a part of this committee has really made me more confident, in a way. It's given me a lot of opportunities, working with all kinds of people, and it's really pushed that passion for wanting to work with other people further in the future, or in the current, I guess. I am going to UMass Lowell, and I'm going to do apply biomedical sciences with a pre-med track. So fingers crossed, good grades, stay on that track. But yeah, overall, just thank you, guys. Like, it's been cool. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. It has been cool.
I suppose the greatest gift that we could give you is letting you decide whether or not you want to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Well.
Wasn't that little glass thing?
Can we have her box?
Yes.
I would appreciate that box.
Nameplate?
Excellent.
Yes. Your nameplate, too, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I love this nameplate, actually.
I'll call for a brief recess of two minutes.
All right. The move. We're in recess for two minutes. All right, we will now return to our regularly scheduled program. Item six, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to start by wishing everybody a wonderful summer break. Tomorrow concludes the school year 23, 24 in the Salem Public Schools, and I want to thank our staff for an outstanding year. I think every year we move away from COVID. We're getting more and more settled into, I guess, whatever the new normal is, but I do want to express my gratitude to the families, the students, and the staff that has, have made this a very successful school year. And we're looking forward to, everybody's looking for the summer, but we're always looking forward to our students coming back to school, which this year will be after Labor Day we start, except for Carlton. I always have to say the except for Carlton. And so it's an extra long break, but our schools are not the same when our young people are not in schools. It's, as much as the quiet is great for the first couple of days, it isn't the same. And none of us would say, we miss, we miss having the energy and the enthusiasm that come with having school each and every day. So we wish everyone a wonderful summer. I do just want to call out that we do have a number of summer resources that are on our webpage, in both math and literacy, and we have another summer reading challenge. And the winner of the summer reading challenge this year will have one per school. If students submit logs, they'll have a chance to pick a name out of a hat for each school, and they get a ride to school with Derby, the, our police community dog, to school. And so last year was fun when students had a chance to ride to school in the fire truck. This year, Derby, who's really the most popular member of the Salem Public Schools, will be accompanying the winners to school. So the last thing I just want to point out is this weekend is the Pride Parade, Saturday, I believe, is a parade. Salem Public Schools will be represented, and we'd love to have other members of the community join the Salem Public Schools for, for that event. And we're also going to be looking for volunteers to support painting crosswalks. That member Hoffman is leading next week, and we'll be sending something out in the next day or two, asking for folks to volunteer to, to help paint crosswalks at a few different schools. And member Hoffman will be getting back to people who volunteer their time, 25th and 26th, is that right, AJ? Okay. So with that, we have two topics on the agenda this evening. The first, and I, given that we have Megan Sousa and Mr. Burns from the high school, we wanted to talk first about class rank, and this was a presentation that was given at the, at the academic subcommittee or the curriculum subcommittee a few weeks ago, or actually, more than a month ago now. And we wanted to share the information with the entire committee, so I would ask Ms. Sousa, who is our Director of College and Career Counseling, and Mr. Burns to join us. And we'll start with you. You all set, Mark, with the?
Well, thank you for, for having us. This is something that we've been thinking about for a little bit, and as we've made changes and to our curriculum, you know, nine through 12, and have a variety of different programs, we think it's really important that as we, we talk about school choice, that we do acknowledge that, well, course choice, not school choice, we have to acknowledge that kids are making choices based on GPAs and rankings, and sometimes that can be detrimental to them. Also, future programming choices for some of the universities, but because it doesn't have the right weight to it, kids will veer off and possibly take something else that may not help their cause as much as their seniors when they start applying to colleges and universities. So I'm with Ms. Sousa today, and she's going to lead the presentation, and we'll collaborate on any questions and answers.
So first, looking at what our current class rank policy is, is that our rank is determined by a weighted grade point average and finalized at the end of each year of study. So a rank is issued at every end of the year based on a weighted GPA. The standards-based grades are converted into traditional letter grades at the end of every semester or year, depending if it's a .5 or a full-credit course. And then those are awarded a GPA value to determine that rank. Independent study courses, and we do have a few for students that are excelling in either world language or in art specifically, but those independent study courses are pass fail, so they are not factored into a rank, also, or factored into a GPA to be able to be part of a ranking system. And scholars need to earn 51% of their credits at Salem High School to be entered into the ranking system. So all students end with a GPA, but students that are coming into the school late, especially within their, end of their junior year, in their senior year, which we do have quite a few, do not earn a rank as part of our program of study. Dual enrollment courses, starting in the school year of 2023, are calculated into rank. So students that are taking courses outside of Salem High School in our colleges are calculated to rank and factored into their graduation requirements. This is just a screenshot of that program study and breakdown for our. This is just a screenshot of that program study and breakdown for our weighted GPA and how those courses are brought down and our and our ranking policy. This current ranking policy does affect our scholars in a number of ways. First, the top performing scholars who have negligible GPA differences can have drastically different outcomes on college acceptances. An example from the 23 school year is that our top four students were within a hundredth of a thousandth of a point from each other. So but that has dramatic effects being valedictorian versus being number four in the class when you're looking at college acceptances and outcomes. Scholars require intervention courses are automatically ranked lower due to the pass fail grading. And this comes into play substantially in the freshman year. We have a number of students that are accessing our intervention supports, like Connect for Success, our multilingual learners in courses, and our students who are on IEP, students with disabilities, that have intervention blocks, that those are all pass fail courses. They're not, they automatically will have a lower rank based on those pass fail not being factored into their GPA. Scholars that elect career and technical education programs are traditionally ranked lower because of the amount of time that CTE coursework takes, especially in junior and senior year. And while they are earning, they are earning our credentials and credits through articulation agreements, they're weighted a CP courses. So while they're doing advanced training within their career tech ed programs, they're always ranked lower because those are considered a college prep weight. Students who enter Salem High Schools later in their career cannot report rank regardless of their GPA. So students that are coming into our schools as a senior who've worked very hard will earn their GPA, and that does get reported. But being but being calculated into the rank, they are not reported. So when we look at that top percentage or the top group of students, that they're ineligible because they're coming in as seniors, regardless of the work they've done at their previous schools. Scholars are able to, scholars that are able to pursue dual enrollment have an advantage, especially when we're looking at that top 10 placement, due to having more courses that factor into the average. So these are college-weighted courses, and that they're having more at that higher level. So students that are able to access dual enrollment outside of the school day will have a much higher chance of earning one of the top spaces in the rank. And class rank does foster an unhealthy level of competition at Salem High School, which is directly against the values of our community of belonging for students to hold, that we do a lot of communication, networking, team building. And when students are looking at their rank and trying to find ways to earn one of the top spot, it does have a negative impact on that community growth. So when we look at eliminating class rank, this does have an impact as well, in that scholars are empowered to choose courses and pathways that align with their interests and post-secondary goals without fear of penalization. So.
It's your art, though.
So students, so students that are looking at at pathways that align with their post-secondary goals, whether that's career tech ed, our art courses, that looking at a liberal arts degree, that they're able and powered to make those choices based on their interests and alignment with their values, rather than choosing courses that may not align with their pathway for the GPA bump. And that students are not penalized penalized for mandated intervention support blocks. So students that are needing intervention support blocks for a number of reasons are empowered to take those courses and have a place of value outside of rank, that they do not feel like they're automatically penalized for needing those intervention blocks and can continue on a path to success for their post-secondary plans. When we look at what colleges' viewpoints on class rank, this is directly from the National Association of College Admission Councilings' annual State of College Admission Report, that only 9.1% of colleges report that rank is of considerable importance. The majority are lower with 27, with over just over a quarter of 2010%, saying it's of no importance. So when we look at the value of class rank that colleges are reporting for admission, it's much lower than the impact that it causes our students to have it. So what does this mean for seniors? And what does this look like in in practice on a transcript? Is that scholars would leave this field blank so that we would just not have a rank? It would have the GPA? And then that we would leave this blank on our on our fields when we're looking at Common App or applications? There are some scholarships and programs that do require to have some reporting, and that can be done through a percentage of where the scholar falls into. We still do have that information, the top 5, 10%. It's very easy to gather, and we can issue that reporting when needed so that students aren't penalized, especially when we're looking at scholarship programs or honors programs that do require a report, and that that is accepted. Counselors will continue to highlight the academic achievements through letters of recommendation and various other ways throughout the academic, the application process. And that a proposed replacement with recognizing students, in one example, is to recognize their overall achievement, cum laude, magna cum laude, summa cum laude distinctions, so that we are recognizing students that are taking advanced coursework, that are earning higher grades, there are ways to honor those distinctions on a transcript and for students at graduation. And then just while there are quite a few private schools that have gone this route, there are also quite a few public schools, just even in the state, that have, that do not report class rank, that this is a growing trend across the nation. And just some examples of schools within Massachusetts Public Schools that have eliminated class rank in the recent years.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee? Number Manning?
I have, I think, three. On the first slide, when you say scholars that earn 51% of the courses outside of Salem High School are not eligible, I'm just interested as to why you phrased that that way as opposed to saying scholars that earn whatever percent inside Salem High School are eligible? Like, what am, what is, what am I not getting here by you phrasing it that way? She said trustingly, but it seems weird.
So currently, the policy is that all the students that earn 50% or more are reported in class rank. So looking at the students that are outside of that 50%, what is, what's reflected on their transcript? So just the report of students that are coming, coming to school, to Salem High Schools within late in their junior year and in their senior year, what is reflected on their transcript?
I get that. But then why not just say that, that they need to, Salem, they need to earn 50% in Salem? As opposed to this sort of backward, convoluted way? I mean, it makes me wonder, why, why is it being stated that way? When the, if it's simply just, you need to get 50 in?
Yeah, I think that.
Unless I'm missing something.
We just wanted to be clear with that because that that is a common thing that we've, we've dealt with. We dealt with, two years ago, I believe it was, just in my tenure, somebody who was vying, technically would have been vying for number one, and it became a real hot button issue with the family because of the elite schools and because we do have a ranking system.
Right.
So we had to personally reach out to the schools and assure the family. And had we not had a ranking system in this way and just put, like, your percentage, which a lot of private schools do do, the student would have been perfectly fine. And the parent was really worried about that affecting scholarships, opportentance into these more elite colleges. So I guess that's, that's why.
I guess I remember that.
Yeah.
But I'm just thinking.
Yeah, there are other ways.
Simple.
Yeah, absolutely. Other ways to word it, but we deal, I guess we're just really stressing that, that that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this as well as opportunities for other kids. And when we look at other schools in the area, a lot of other schools are doing, looking at more of a percentage ranking and not labeling one, two, three, four, five, six. And for us, it gives our kids the opportunity to take a CTE class that they're really interested in. It also gives our kids an opportunity not to say, between my eighth and ninth grade year, which we've had kids do, I'm at Salem State taking dual enrollment classes, because I know I want to be number one, I'm going to hit top five, and I have to do these things.
Yeah.
And that's what, those are the things that we're, we're.
Right. And I get that, everything on these following pages. It's just this particular phrasing of this piece of criteria seems.
It's just the way I got worded. It wasn't, there was nothing else behind it besides really stressing that that has been an issue for a few families that have transferred into the district.
And then my second question was, I don't understand the statement that the, so when if the student picks the CTE program, and they're ranked lower because almost all the CTE courses are college prep, is that actually saying because they aren't honors or?
Correct.
Okay. So the reason really is they're not really lower because they're taking college, they're they're lower because they're not taking the level above college?
Because they're lower because college prep is our, in our ranking system, are considered the lowest weight.
Right, right. No, again, I get that. I guess I'm just looking for clarity in what the statement says.
It's saying that because, yeah, because they don't have honors ranking or honors weight, that kids are, they're being detrimental, they're being affected negatively in their class rank.
So it's, it's sort of just making the statement college prep level is bad, and it's not what's good for this purpose?
For ranking, if you're a student who's really paying attention to your ranking, you would stay away from our CTE classes?
Because they're college prep.
Correct.
Okay, I get that. I just want to make sure I was understanding that right.
Absolutely.
And then I had one other one, which I'm sure you're thrilled. But I'm just curious. So the proposed replacement with the cum laude, et cetera, all right? What's the plan for those? Because the proposal is to replace them with recognizing them with those three levels, but where's the, do you have a plan yet for how specific, how are you going to reach those? How are you going to determine now who's at magna and who's at summa and who's whatever? Because otherwise, isn't the same issue going to start to crop up? Like, how did the student get to be this as opposed to this or opposed to this if they, that whole ranking thing of courses is still going to be an issue, right? So do you have a plan here?
The ranking part is, we wouldn't be giving individual ranks, so a kid wouldn't, wouldn't be opposed to veering off and saying, I'm going to take a CTE class. But there are still levels of classes and courses that they're taking.
But who's going to tell me as the parent what my child needs to become a magna or a summa or a plane, or just laude? You know, what's?
So that's based on, that would be based on the overall GPA. We would have that outlined in our course, our course catalog, so that it's very clear how it's aligned to our GPA and our, and our grading system. Also, the proposal is that this would begin in, for the graduates of the 2026 school year, so that students that are rising seniors wouldn't be impacted and what their trajectories have been for their four years with this change. So this would be phased in intentionally to look at the best ways to report for scholarships and our percentage, to map out any areas of distinction, and that be, that be communicated with the community and family in a really intentional way.
But if these are going to be, these three categories are going to be determined on GPA, then aren't we back to the same issue of how are you going to determine the GPA? I mean, I hate to.
Could I just help a little bit with that? Because it's a difference between rank and range. So those awards are a range, and it's distinct from, from ranking. So any, you know, if students are applying to college, you know, you're in this box. There's no, we don't know if I'm ahead of you or you're ahead of me. We're just in the range.
You're in that clump.
Yeah, so.
But who determines how you get in that range?
That's a pretty standard range for any, for high schools. So it's not hard to, I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's a standard range. So they're, they don't have to invent the range.
And is it based on GPA?
Yes. But because it's not ranked.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt students in their college applications. The, their GPA is their GPA. Colleges have to see that information. So it's just the, it's the, again, it's the range versus rank.
Okay, so we're not going in a circle getting back to the same problem?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Wouldn't, would not, wouldn't the CTE students be lower in, in a lower range then?
Right.
Not necessarily, no, because, because, well, you, I don't need to, Megan can explain.
So while we do report a weighted GPA, not necessarily because of the other courses that they take, they're earning As, Bs in their final grades in those courses, that they would still be within that range in their GPA. It may look slightly different than a student who took all AP courses that are at a 4.5, but it's very easy to be in a 4.1, 4.2 and take CTE classes. But the difference for ranking, last year, as an example, where the top four were within a hundredth of a thousandth percent or point away from each other, that goes away, and they earn their distinction. So their hard work and grades are recognized through a system like a cum laude distinction rather than rank.
Do you have this yet in written form that I could like, I mean, I just processed the reading it better?
We're working on all of the details, and that's, that's why it's a phase in. So this was the beginning from our subcommittee, putting out the idea, doing a little bit of research on some of the schools. And then as we go into the summer and into the early fall, we're going to map out all of the details based on schools that we've met with, and that you then hopefully will have another presentation that will say this is kind of what we're looking at for Salem High School.
Number Chris?
So I had a similar question to number Manning, but just so I'm clear, we'd moved to ranges for the distinctions. So, and I'm, again, I'm not giving, but just, I'm looking at the sheet that you have here for the weighted GPAs. So the ranges could be like similar to what they do with the college programs for cum laude, magna cum laude, summa cum laude, where the minimum threshold might be like a 3.3 for a cum laude, and then it, the higher you go, then you enter into the next category? Okay. But you're going to consult with college board on what those ranges are? Or are you consulting with anybody?
Other, our local high schools that do this.
So you'll talk to like Walpole as an example, or some of the ones that you listed here about how they determine their ranges? Okay, thank you.
Number Cornell?
And just to clarify, colleges don't care about students graduating with those distinctions. Those are, they're much more informality for high schools. What colleges are primarily looking at, if you're looking, we're just talking about colleges, right? They're just looking at the strength of a student's schedule and their GPA. So those distinctions, you can put that on your Common Application, but it, it doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Any further questions on that? Number Manning?
Just not really a question, just a comment. I mean, as far as the future, when looking in, when I see like high schools that don't report it, and you have like eight of them or seven of them or something, I mean, I don't, I'm not necessarily looking for more of that. I mean, if you think you're doing the right thing and you can show me how it's going to work, it's not important to me that you list other high schools that are doing it. It's what you, as a school, decide is the right thing to do for kids, but be able to back it up with a plan to replace it.
Absolutely.
I'm not looking for that.
Yeah, we absolutely believe that. There's no doubt that we believe it's the right thing to do for kids, for their competitive edge, and to be competitive with some of many of the private schools that are in the area. I mean, we really upped our game with, to Ms. Cornell's point, our strength of schedule, the amount of AP classes, our early college classes, to really set our kids apart. And then right now, we're really punishing this, this kind of close to the top group aren't getting the benefits of that strength of schedule because they might not have done some of the other things before they even entered high school, which is, which is detrimental to them. And unfortunately, some of our families, they know what those things are, and many of them have no idea that, like, I can speak to, many of our families have no idea, I can take college classes between, once my kid gets out of eighth grade. And most of our families don't know that. And the ones that do may not have the means to get to Salem State or get their kid there, or may have plans over the summer to do that. And that is more families than, it's a decent amount of families that do take advantage of those in Salem.
Thank you. Anything else? Yep. Number Chris?
Not a question that you have to answer now, but if down the line, if you could just share any of the, you had mentioned that you had some feedback that you've gotten from students about how like that competitiveness had impacted them? If you could just like share with us where that is coming from? Is that like the Panorama surveys? Is that conversations with the students that are like currently in the top? conversations with the students that are like currently in the top 10, just so that we can get a sense of like what they were reporting to you all in terms of how unhealthy it got, just, it would just be good for us to understand it, not something you need to elaborate on now.
Yeah, no.
If you could get us those.
It comes from all, all of the above.
Okay.
I mean, I can speak to every, every year, actually except for this year, because there was a larger difference between our top 10, but in the previous years, because it was so close, there were families that had us recalculating their, their GPAs and looking for other courses because it was, it was that close. In a system like this, as other schools are doing it, colleges know what it is, it makes total sense for colleges, but it doesn't lead to that unhealthy, like that was really unhealthy for our families, they're super stressed out over, my child needs to be number one or number two, or it's, that's just not acceptable. And it's, and it doesn't, it's not one conversation, it's months of this until graduation.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much for the update, looking forward to hearing more. Did you keep, keep going forward on this work?
Thank you.
All right, our second item is just a brief update on the summer work that's happening across the district, we want to just give you an update on what folks can expect for facilities improvements, and so we have Z here, and I believe Elizabeth is with us online, is that true, Mark? Okay. She may want to chime in, but Z, you're going to run point on this, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you all for having me. All right.
Z, if it's okay with you, maybe I'll jump in for this part?
You got it.
Thanks, good evening everyone, I'm sorry I'm not with you in person, but as with all of our presentations, we wanted to make sure we were centering our conversation around the priorities and our strategic plan. And I think as we discussed before, I can safely say that the work of our buildings and grounds and facilities group is woven through all of our priorities, elevating learning, empowering educators, setting up our foundation. When we think in the work that we have done this year, the upgrades, the repairs and the investments we've made in our buildings, in our grounds, and when we met you over the summer and even as we look ahead to next year, we believe that we will empower educators and strengthen our foundation. So I just wanted to set that context. Tonight, we'll look back, as I said, at some of the highlights of this year, we'll touch on our capital programs and investments that we're going to make and then really do a deep dive on what the work will look like this summer and what you can expect to see in the fall.
All right, our next slide is going to be about Operation Zero. Operation Zero is our work order management system that we have here in the district. Back in 2018, we, it was originally called Facility Dude, we then upgraded a year ago to Operation Zero. You can see this slide, there is the data from Salem High School all the way down to New Liberty and Salem Prep with how many work orders we've had this past year. The numbers in that bubble have been upgraded, this, this bubble, this presentation was to the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee back on June 7th. Since then, we've had 870 work orders with 695 closed. Right now, as of today, we have 175 open work orders. Those are work orders that we have to split up into buckets, whether it's capital requests, not just for this year or for the, for the future. Since 2018, we've had roughly 3,500 work orders. I got a question about how many work orders the staff have put in. Three months ago, we opened Operation Zero up to all Salem Public School staff, roughly 80 work orders have been implemented and put in from staff alone, other than senior building custodians in three months. I'm curious to see and I'm pretty sure the data will change next year after having a full year of staff being able to put in work orders through Operation Zero, so we will see a change in that. Our goal, what we guarantee is a response within 48 hours of your work order is either complete, what we need for it to be complete, or the work we're doing on trying to get it complete. That's been our goal, we do reply within 48 hours guaranteed, last, we want like a 48 hour metric that Operations Zero does not have yet, they are working on getting. Last Thursday and Friday, we had, two days combined, we had 13 work orders, we completed eight of those, so roughly 65% of the work orders got completed. All right, a couple, a few highlights from school year 23 and 24, we, this past school year, we completed our required asbestos inspections, we had a company come out and inspect all Salem Public Schools to keep us in compliance with the AHRRA and the Asbestos Hazard Repair Act. We completed extensive sprinkler repairs, roughly $275,000 of capital improvement funds went into sprinkler repairs, we replaced valves, sprinkler heads, we tested flow on our side of the building plus the city side of the building on the fire pumps. This past year, we had a successful heating season, not only did we run every boiler in the city, that in previous years, we didn't have that capability, but we also added heat in our spaces such as the auditorium at Salem High School, which was a big win, we saw both students and staff utilizing that space much, much more. We've upgraded security servers, security servers across the district, most of the security servers in the district were installed in 2000, running Genetek 5.2 software, we upgraded them to Genetek 5.11 software, this gives us capability of adding more cameras down the line, more access controls down the line, and also having better capabilities of viewing any issues that arise. Last year, we added a security entry vestibule in Salem High School, this is what we want to kind of accomplish throughout the district, we also installed the second one at Horace Mann, it isn't completed yet, the vestibule itself is completed, we do have some door hardware work that we have to complete, that will be complete this summer. We added wayfinding signage at Bentley, the signage before was mismatched, it had different numbers, it didn't have anything in braille, so we added dual language signage, including braille for visually impaired. We conducted monthly walkthroughs, so two years ago, we started our monthly walkthroughs, the way monthly walkthroughs work are, we start in the summer, we start walkthroughs with Dr. Zright, we make sure schools are ready to go and ready to open up safely and clean for students and staff, then we have monthly walkthroughs that we do every, every month at every building, and we gather input on, from principals, from various staff, on what the building need is, from our senior building custodians, on what we see arising, we want to get out of the reactive way of thinking and repairing things and get more into preventative repairing, and this has helped us out a lot. Last year, we implemented an end of the year walkthrough, which was important and, you know, helped us, just like this year, when we did it, helped us give, you know, kind of gather all our information in this presentation on what we have to do going into the summer. I definitely want to encourage and invite members of this committee to any of the walkthroughs that we do, especially beginning of the school year, to kind of see what we've done during the summer, I'd love that. One thing that is not on this slide deck for the highlights, we, Bertram Field, we have kept up with all preventive maintenance at Bertram Field, we painted the whole interior of the building on the off season during the winter, we replaced two light poles across from the bleachers, the padding that we had around those light poles were all matted and ripped and torn, so we replaced those. This summer at Bertram, we're going to be pressure washing the bleachers because they haven't been done in quite some time, and also making some repairs. The unbudgeted repairs that we had this past year, with the AHRRA inspections that we had, it was, the scope of the work was for all schools. We later came to find out that the only schools that we have been doing were Salem High School and Bentley every three years, and that was six years, going on six years now. So then I, we had to change the scope to include a full inspection of all other schools that hadn't been done since 20, since early 2000s. The Salem High School water heater, we installed the second water heater to give us adequate hot water throughout the building. The Horace Mann boiler, we had to replace four sections in Boiler Two to make sure it was up and running, so that way we didn't rely on just one boiler for the heating season. District-wide door replacements that we had to do, it was mainly wear and tear on multiple doors in different buildings, and also mold issues that we came across at Horace Mann due to, due to valves not properly working and the controls not properly working. The capital improvements that we have received, the capital improvement funds that we have received for FY25 are as follows, we have received, for the HVAC chillers, we're replacing 10 coils in one chiller at Collins and three coils at one chiller at Salts, that'll get us with two chillers running and working out of the four at Collins and two working out of the three at Salt and Stall. We will be replacing the generator at Bates, it's passed its useful life, we've been multiple repairs this, the past few years, we've replaced the turbo on it, the flex pipe, and also hoses in the radiator, parts are getting scarce as we go for it, and it keeps on just, you know, we fix one thing, the other thing keeps breaking, so we want to move away from that, and it's also passed its useful life. Safety and security repairs across the district, that includes mechanical, electrical and plumbing, so anything HVAC related, electrical or plumbing repairs, along with life safety equipment, whether it's fire, fire sprinkler, sprinkler work, doors, the last, the lighting, weatherization, infiltration and controls, this work is part of our, of our energy management, our energy management project and Emmeresco that we've hired. We want to, we're going to be replacing lighting at Horace Mann, Bates, Bentley, Carlton and Witchcraft, we're going to be replacing old T8s with brand new LED light bulbs in those schools, the weatherization infiltration reductions, it's door and window weatherization along with roof flashing and sidewall, and of course, we're going to be doing the controls at Horace Mann. For playgrounds, we're planning on repairing Bates, Bentley, Horace Mann, Salts, and also replacing the kindergarten playground at Bates. For this summer, like every summer when we start off, we start off by deep cleaning all our buildings, this is really a top to bottom approach, we start with the high dusting of the ceilings and light fixtures, we scrub down the walls, we move all furniture out, we clean, we clean and scrub furniture, once the room is emptied, we, whether we scrub and wax the floor or we strip and wax the floor, stripping and waxing, it's depending on if there's summer school going on in the building that year, we would like to strip and wax every building, but we just don't have that, we just don't have that capability. Basically, when we're stripping, we're taking layers and layers of wax down, getting, getting it down to bare tile. Plumbing repairs and electrical, and electrical repairs district-wide, for ADA repairs this summer, we will be replacing concrete sections at the Salt and Stall playground, we did some last summer, we do have a couple more that we have to do over there, over at Salts on the upper playground, we're going to be adding yellow transition tape to the tops and bottoms of each staircase in the district. Painting touch-ups, it's going to be a mixture between in-house, in-house staff, outside contractors and youth build, youth build will be able to come out twice a week from, I'm going to say mid-July to mid-August. Our goal was to paint at least one full building, we're not going to have that capability. Painting was also a hard button topic in our walkthroughs with almost every principal this, a couple weeks ago when we did the walkthroughs, so we definitely want to do as much as we can, we're not going to be able to do exactly what we wanted, but we're going to try to do as much as we can with what we have, changing of HVAC filters and completing around 90 classroom moves district-wide. So these are the by-school projects that we have this year, as you can see, for Bates, we have the big projects, the boilers and controls that are getting replaced, we're planning floor tiles, Bentley alone and ECC together, they have 40 classroom moves in that building alone that we have to do. The Carlton and Horace Mann, it says making necessary repairs to RTUs, we're going to be making necessary repairs to rooftop units to provide cooling to some parts of the building. Collins will be installing additional vape detectors, replacing coils in one chiller. Salt and Stall will be making repairs to restroom partitions, adding mulch to both playgrounds, and also replacing the fence in front of the school, to the right, to the right of the school that separates the Halle Shanda School, along with work at Salem High School and Witchcraft. Witchcraft is getting a brand new playground this summer, that project is starting June 20th, so in a few days.
Z, I think member Cruz has a question or comment?
Z, quick question for you, I was just reviewing the school-based projects and I recognize that this is a big issue amongst middle schoolers and high schoolers that we're all trying to tackle, I just noticed that the Collins and the high school are getting vape detectors installed, I'm assuming that there's probably been some issues or some have been installed in Salt and Stall already?
Yes.
Okay, so that's been completed?
That's been completed, definitely, yep. That was, yeah, a couple years ago, yep.
Thank you.
These projects on this slide right here, they're projects that we have already funding in place, along with schedules in place, that the work is going to be completed, some of the work has already started in some of these projects, but this work will be completed around the time that school starts. So for the Witchcraft Playground project, 95% of the equipment has arrived, like I said, the start date for this project is July 20th, and we're scheduled to have the work completed the week of September 10th. We had a pre-construction meeting last week that went really good, and we're eager to get the project started and, you know, replace the old playground equipment that was not user-friendly and in need of repair, and also not ADA accessible. The Bates boilers and controls, along with the Witchcraft controls, so we're going to be replacing two boilers at Bates that are 24 years of age with energy efficient boilers, this is part of the Emmeresco project. The controls that we're going to be replacing at Witchcraft and Bates are non-proprietary Niagara controls, that means we're not going to, we're not going to have to have an outside contractor come in to switch these controls from cooling to heating or from cooling to heating, it's something that we're going to be able to do ourselves and it's more user-friendly. The, we're doing an LED lighting upgrade on all three floors in the academic wing at Salem High School, roughly 255 light fixtures that we have to replace, this is a separate project from the Emmeresco lighting project from the previous slide. These are the projects that were starting July 1st, part of our capital improvement funds, like I said in the previous slide, lighting upgrades at Horace Mann, Bates, Bentley, Carlton and Witchcraft, we're not only going to be upgrading the lighting, but we're also going to be upgrading the lighting controls, this is going to give us capability of the lights dimming down, once they're not in use, we'll be able to save energy that way. The Bates generator that we're going to be replacing, also, like I said, coil replacements at the chillers at Salt and Stall and Collins Middle School, the Bates playground, the kindergarten through five-year-old playground that we're going to be replacing, also ADA repairs district-wide that I touched upon earlier, part of the ADA repairs district-wide is the playground at Horace Mann needs some work for ADA, and then the controls at Horace Mann that we're going to start, these projects here will not be done before school starts, these are projects that we will be starting July 1st and working on throughout the year. Projects and things that we won't be able to do this summer, my goal was to add additional cameras to, to the exterior of all buildings, we don't have coverage in our playgrounds or really in our main entrances, the coverage we have in our major entrances are just kind of like a spotlight down right at the main door, we wanted to broaden that coverage, just for better coverage and safer buildings. Repainting whole schools, including Horace Mann, that we won't be able to do, and also fully replacing all coils, all coils, all coils and chillers at Salts and Collins Middle And then the last slide is just. And then the last slide is just looking ahead, kind of like a three-year plan I've created to just get us away from reactive thinking and just thinking preventatively. As you can see, for boilers, we're going to be replacing Bates this summer, along with the next boiler for Witchcraft, and the boiler after that Horace Mann. Carlton, hopefully that's a preventative repair and not a reactive in 2027. For chillers, I didn't really create or add dates, just because with Amaresco, we're trying to hopefully install heat pumps in a lot of our schools. That way we can be more energy efficient throughout the district. The controls, that is a big component of our success. We have Bates and Witchcraft, Summer '24, and then we'd hope to do throughout this year, Horace Mann, and then the next controls would be Carlton, along with generators, fire panels. The lighting, like I said, I didn't put any dates in here because of the majority of the lighting, other than Salts, Salem High School, and Collins is going to be done this This plan right here is more of a life, a life safety, and things that we need to keep our buildings open and running safely. I'm working on another three-year plan of auditorium spaces, gym spaces, outdoor spaces. We have curtains. We have sound systems that we need replacing in a lot of our buildings, windows, screens, basketball backstops. The list goes on and on, so I tried to put the most important things in this three-year plan, and while I'm working on a bigger three-year plan. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you, Z. One question that I have, and I know that you've told me before, but can you just share how many staff you have?
Currently, 32 staff. We have three groundskeepers, maintenance tech, a custodian or maintenance foreperson, and the rest are custodians.
Okay, awesome.
Yes.
A couple more questions. Is it possible, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Zric as well, is it possible for parents who want to volunteer to help move stuff? And maybe educators don't want volunteers to do that, but is there, basically my question is, is it possible for parents to volunteer to help with any, any of the work that needs to be done?
Want to take that?
Sure.
I think in select places, I'd be very wary of having parent, there's liability that we assume for large projects if we have parents helping out. There are examples, though, that, you know, of, around painting, and that we may be able to organize if parents did want to help with certain projects that wouldn't, you know, be as maybe strenuous, but could help, you know, cosmetically with schools. And so parents have helped with murals, they've, you know, and we could certainly use support if parents were interested, because painting is, I think, an issue, as Z said, every principal will tell you, they want, you know, extra paint in their buildings, especially since, you know, as things go up on the walls, they come off, they leave marks, and all of our schools, paint would go a long way. So we could, you know, we could organize, we'd have to, we'd want everybody, you wouldn't want me painting, so I'd be wary of some people, but with, what's that?
I said, "me neither" for the record.
Well, we'd want some, you know, somebody to manage and lead that a little, but it could happen if we wanted to organize people to do that.
My intention would definitely not be to put more work on you, Z, and I know that that, sometimes that can be a little bit tricky, but I am always willing to help out with all the, you know, the dirty work. And then the last thing that I wanted to ask here is, can you just share with the public, I know we've talked about this in subcommittee meetings, but which buildings take up the most resources, and that including money and just people power?
Okay. Well, the first and foremost, I think it's Salem High School. That takes a large amount of resource, not only from funding standpoint, but it's a massive space. It's 465,000 square feet. The average of cleaning space is 40,000 square feet per custodian, and we have currently five, six custodians in that building, which is, I'd love a lot more, but it is, we've come a long way from the days of where we had only three custodians in that building. So the second building is Bentley, just because of the age of the building and the lack of permanent maintenance over the years. That building is, I mean, it's a building that doesn't have AC, doesn't have cooling. It needs a lot of work to get to a safer building. So those are the two buildings that stand out for me.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? No. Member Manning?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I guess first of all, I'm just wondering, it seems like we only opened the Bertram Field building, like, in the recent past, and I'm just wondering why the whole building needed to be repainted already?
Because it does get used a lot. Also, the, both locker rooms, because of the cleats and the spikes on the shoes, it tore through the paint in one season.
That's the floor?
That's the floor. And then also the walls that we painted.
The walls? We climb the walls in our cleats?
Well, no, the walls, the walls didn't have any-
I guess I'm questioning the walls more than the floors.
The walls didn't have any cleat damage, but, you know, we try scrubbing and cleaning the walls, and whatever doesn't come out, we paint.
Really?
Mm-hmm. And again, it was, it's during the offseason where we had a light winter.
Yeah. You know, I just, I would hope, I guess I was hoping it would last longer than it, than, you know, that it did without needing that much attention.
I mean, it was also two years.
Yeah.
It was also, you know, used for two years. And, you know, we want to, we want to stay up on things to the point where it doesn't get to the point where it's going to need a whole lot more work.
I just want to remind you that we did talk in the subcommittee, and I just want to keep on the front burner that when it comes time to, to the kindergarten playground at Bates, I mean, we had a lot of talk about this in subcommittees, and I know there was some feeling at the subcommittee, again, we still want to be in the loop on that.
100%.
I know you get, you know, things out and you're waiting to hear and stuff, but I really, I just don't want surprises in that area because that started out so expensive.
Definitely.
And this, this is a sort of a question, I don't even know how to phrase it. When you talk about Bentley, and you talked about the signage, the redirection for the signage, and you talked about adding Braille, so am I assuming, because it's a dual-language school, that there are two sets of Braille in that building now? Because I'm thinking of like the accents and stuff, like, I don't know enough about the writing of Spanish, but I know that there may be instances where, to make sense, there would have to be, it isn't just spelling a word differently, it's with different accents and stuff. So have we, have we done that? Or do we just put a new set of Braille on and hope everybody gets it?
We put a new set of Braille on there, but I can look into it and know what it can take.
Can you just total check that?
Definitely, yep.
I just, I mean, if we're going to go to the expense of putting a whole new set of Braille in, I'd like it to be correct for both languages.
Definitely.
And then, just tell, just tell me, at Witchcraft, when it says, "replace the exterior gym camera,"
Yes.
How do we have a camera on the exterior of a gym? A gym is a room, so it's an interior room.
It's the exterior doors by the gym.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Got it. Doors is, okay. I was like, okay, what's going on there? Thank you.
No problem.
Door, gym door, camera.
Member Cornell?
I know you'd think I would want to go watch the Celtics, but I do want to just say how much I appreciate the preventative thinking that goes into this. You know, I've worked in a lot of horrible buildings where you're just sort of chasing broken things, and so I just want to just say like how, how much I really appreciate the long-term thinking.
Thank you.
And, you know, yeah, you do have to paint after two years, that you're not at five years, and the kids are in a building that makes them feel bad and, you know, makes it, just doesn't make you want to get up and learn, so I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that.
I appreciate that.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last thing I just have is, I just want to thank the members of my department for the hard work they do night in and night out, so, and, you know, getting ready for a big summer, so, thank you.
Thank you.
You got it.
I believe that concludes the superintendent's report.
Yes, that does conclude the superintendent's report.
Right. No student representatives report, old business, none, new business, none. Finance and operations report, a budget transfer totaling $153,978.70.
Yeah.
Member Cruz?
I make a motion to approve the budget transfers totaling in the amount of $153,978.70 from the lines designated within the packet.
Second.
So moved and seconded under discussion. Member Cruz?
I was just going to ask if Ms. Polly, if there's anything that in particular you wanted to highlight for us.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to note, this will be the last set of transfers we bring for FY ' '24. This is part of our year-end balancing our budget, and what I think is notable about these transfers is that we are transferring funds from personnel lines to non-personnel lines, so that, of course, we will have school committee approval. And these are funds that appear to be remaining because of the last, and they are related, these are sort of unexpected funds that are unspent, and if a lot of us close out, are non-personal expenses. So I think that's all I would add. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for the members, for the assistant superintendent, or the superintendent? Seeing none, no further discussion. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? The matter carries. Subcommittee reports? Any further reports from subcommittees? None. School committee concerns and resolutions? All right. Seeing none?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So fast on that. Under discussion?
Does want to see the-
See, all in, well, let's talk about this. All in favor?
Does anybody have a score?
Opposed? The matter carries, we're adjourned.